Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome all members and guests to the October 8th, 2025 Public Hearing Committee Meeting and remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised, so if you could take a moment to ensure your phones are on silent, that would be appreciated. If you're attending virtually today, please mute yourself when not speaking. When called upon to speak, please turn on your camera, unmute yourself, and for staff using Microsoft Teams, please use your hand raise feature and remove it when you are finished. And with that, I call the October 8th, 2025 Public Hearing Committee Meeting to order. Just a quick note, we are having some construction on the roof and in the attic today, and it has resulted in some technical difficulties with the microphone, so we might have to take some breaks to troubleshoot that. Hopefully not. Roll call, all members of committee are present. Councilor Shelley is joining us virtually. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest today? Seeing none, I'm looking for a mover in a second or please to approve the agenda as presented. Member Van Drishy and Huffman, all in favor? Carried, thanks. I now officially open the public meeting authorized to be held under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and county policy. Please be advised that under the Ontario Planning Act, as amended by the province, only specified persons and public bodies as defined in the Planning Act may appeal a decision of Norfolk County to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Third parties or anyone who is not a specified person or public body do not have the right to appeal a decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, to preserve the ability to be a party to appeal any of the Ontario Land Tribunal matters, third parties or general members of the public are required to make comments or provide written submissions. These meetings are to allow oral and written comments and input to decisions on specified development applications. And the first item we have on the agenda today is item 4.1, the Long Point Region Source Protection Plan, which is Report CDS 25063.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, your camera's not on.
Thank you through the mayor. The purpose of the municipally-initiated official plan and zoning by law amendment is to carry out the Long Point Region Source Protection Plan update pertaining to the decommissioning of the Limandam in Dalhuy. The amendment proposes to update policy 3.3.1 of the official plan text to remove the references to the intake protection zones 1 and 2 and Dalhuy previously identified as drinking water. The removal of the intake protection zones will apply to Schedule D, Water Resources of the Official Plan. It is noted that the county shall provide proof of compliance to the Source Protection Plan Authority following the adoption of the Official Plan Amendment by law to be provided by planning staff. The following mapping will be updated in the Official Plan and the zoning by law. An amendment to the county zoning by law Schedule B3 will have protection areas is required to remove the intake protection zones mapping. Staff recommend that Report CDS 25063 for the municipally-initiated official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment applications be received for information. Any comments received as part of the statutory public meeting will be considered in a future recommendation report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from committee? Seeing none, is there anyone here in council chambers that wishes to speak to this report Is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak to the staff report? Okay, a mover in a second or please for staff's recommendation to receive the report as information and that comments received as part of the statutory public meeting be considered in a future recommended staff report. Councilor Van Passen, Councilor Duffy, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Item 4.2 is 105 Donley Drive, CDS 25062.
This is a proposal to amend the zoning bylaw and the official plan for property located at 105 Donley Drive. I'm just trying to figure out how to get onto the slideshow here. Okay, they say context, the property's on the south side of Donley Drive. It is approximately 1.98 acres, or sorry, yes, 1.98 acres, 0.80 hectares. The subject lands are in, it's currently an industrial, used as an industrial building. Proposed amendment, the amendment is, the proposal is to amend both zoning bylaw and the official plan. The property is currently designated as protected industrial in the official plan and zone as general industrial in the zoning bylaw. The amendment would put a special policy in the official plan and a site-specific provision in the zoning bylaw to allow a gymnastics club as a permitted use in the building. None of the industrial uses would be removed for future, in case in the future that the building would like to revert back to industrial uses. There's the map of the official plan and the zoning. There were no tech, technical reports were not required for this. Technical comments were included, and I have not received any public comments. The building would be serviced by existing services. And it is planning staff's recommendation that, there is a slight error on this page in your agenda, CDS, Report CDS 2025 for Development Application, ONPL 2025 031 and ZNPL 2025. I believe your copy says 2035. It should say 2025 in the report. If we're in 2035, we're, yeah. So in future, and in the future, that all comment should be taken into account in a future report to council. Thank you, I will now answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Van Passen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. When I read through our zoning bylaw, I can't see anywhere that it has a definition of a gymnastics club, or I can't see any zoning that we have where it would allow a gymnastics club. And my concern would be that if we get that specific, that what if the business model changes and they might want to add like a dance school or yoga classes or something to that effect, and then they'd have to go through the whole process again. So I'm wondering if we can sort of, well, if this were to be approved, tweak that definition somehow, or staff has some comments on something that is in the bylaw and what they would allow, just to allow a little bit of flexibility in case the business model changes down the road?
Through the chair to Councilor Van Passen, yes, that's something we can look at. This is just a preliminary hearing and just a preliminary draft bylaw, so when the report comes back to council, staff can certainly look at amending that or coming up with a definition to include various other things as well.
Councilor Huffman.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, through you to staff. Just wondering, do we have a, does the gymnastics club have a timeline as to when they would like to move on, move forward with this?
Through the chair to Councilor Huffman, yesterday if possible. So, yeah, they, this is going to be, my goal is to get this report to council for the 28th of this month, so I will strive my best to get, get it done so that way they can get this, get this moving.
Councilor Columbus, I'm not sure your microphone's going to work.
Is this gymnastic club operating in time in the county?
Through the chair, this is the Simcoe Gliders Gymnastics Club that were, was asked to vacate from the fairgrounds, and they were looking for a new building, and they came up with the warehouse at the back of the annexed building.
Okay, so it's not the one that's where the old Canadian canters was, no?
No, it's just the one that was near the stairs at the fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Not a question, just similar comments to Councilor Van Passen. This is not the first time that specifically gymnastics studio has had a difficult time staying in business in Norfolk County. Spectrum Gymnastics had to pave the way at a high cost to that business owner and, quite frankly, rejuvenated a space in downtown Simcoe that was much needed. And I've actually been contacted by a small, a small business owner as well, who's looking to just relocate into the Central Business District with a commercial zoning for a small fitness gymnastics-related studio that doesn't have the means and the resources to go through the entire rezoning process. So, Councilor Van Passen's correct, it shouldn't be this difficult, and it shouldn't take this long. So if we can keep that in mind when we're reviewing the language and the definition before the next, before it comes back, that would be appreciated because the language doesn't exist, and so it's, it's difficult for folks to find where they fall in line. With that, is there anyone here in the room that wishes to speak to this file? Anyone on the line? Okay, not seeing anyone, so we have a staff recommendation here. It's on the screen before you, and essentially we're receiving as information, any comments are put into a staff report that will come back at a later date for decision. Councilor Duffy moves, seconded by Councilor Huffman, all in favor? Carried, sorry, I did see you there, I just didn't get to you in time. 4.3, 215 Victoria Street, Simcoe Report, CDS 25057.
Thank you. Through the mayor, this application is seeking a zoning bylaw amendment to allow for the construction of a condominium development with associated parking. The subject lands are at the corner of Donley Drive South and Victoria Street within the urban residential OP district designation of Simcoe. The lands are currently vacant and undeveloped with frontage on both Donley and Victoria, as well as a small section on Austin Crescent. The main surrounding uses are lower-density residential with an industrial site on the south side of Victoria. It is proposed to change the use of the land from neighborhood commercial to R5 with a special provision to address parking and site constraints. The R5 zoning would allow a building of up to five stories in height. The special provision would allow for a change to the onsite parking provision, location of the parking relative to the building, and an increased density or floor area ratio. Report CDS 25057 contains the technical comments in attachment C, public comments that were received at the time of the writing of the report are in attachment D. Five more public comments have been received prior to this meeting and have been circulated to members, and they all raise similar concerns to the previously published comments. The actual number of units will be determined at the time of site plan and will need to be balanced with the available onsite land for vehicle parking. The site plan stage would also be when the single access on Victoria Street and road widening issues raised by development engineering would be reviewed and implemented. As such, staff recommend that Report CDS 25057 for Development Application, ZNPL 2025 146 be received for information, and that any comments received as part of the statutory public meeting will be considered in a future staff recommendation report. Thank you, and I'm here if there are any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions from council members? Councilor Van Passen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, without prejudging the decision on this, and maybe a question directed at Mr. Lambert, the proposal is going to be a little bit short on parking in its current form. We're looking to take a little bit of land away for road widening to make that Victoria Street consistent. And I wonder, like Victoria Street right now is probably two and a half lanes of pavement wide, if you measured it, and would it be possible as part of this application to have the developer sort of widen the paved area? So there, there's a parking lane on the north side of Victoria Street that would add some additional public parking, but not specific to this unit, but just add more parking in that area, and then sort of shift the center line of the road a little bit. You could have two lanes on one side, one on the other. Whether that is a possible, even possible in the real world or not, so.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. I guess, given the proximity of this site to the intersection, and looking kind of forward out in time as lands in the area overall continue to develop, including lands south of Victoria, down at the south end of Donley Drive, I can certainly envision that that intersection at some point in time in the medium term in the future may require some turn lanes to be built, but there could possibly be space if I, one looked further to the east up the road to perhaps create a lay-by parking situation, if that's something that the applicant wishes to explore to resolve the parking shortage within the site.
If I could, Madam Mayor, yeah, we, I found that you can't put right-hand turn lanes at four-way stop because it just confuses the heck out of people, but there's about 1,000 feet on the north side of Victoria Street that abuts the backyards of the houses that are currently on, on the next street over, and that would be the area I suggest if we could put 10 or 15 extra parking spaces there. Might be helpful in the future if the rest of the plan were to be approved, so.
Councilor Duffy.
Okay, I think we're working, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I think also to Darnell, I'll say, you know, this site has been sitting vacant, it, it doesn't look good, it is prime for development, so I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I would say the density is perhaps a bit too high, but I'll pose that to the applicant or the agent in a few minutes, but specifically on the parking, I do have significant challenge with. So I think to Mr. Lambert, you just touched on it, we're looking at significant development on the south side of, of Donley in the coming years. There's already problems, I mean, I think you and I have met up there, I met with Mr. King up there on Donley related to parking around the school and stopping it around the school. That's only going to get worse with this. There is no on-street parking available on Austin, really, it is packed already. The same on Freeman. So I guess, my question is that it's a fairly significant reduction of parking, and I would even say, as much as it's only one space, it's required for one-bedroom unit, that's not really realistic, because there's a good chance there's a couple in there with two vehicles. So what are some other options that could be considered here to try and sort of push back and say, look, that, that, this isn't sufficient, we need more? Or other suggestions? I like Councilor Van Passen's idea as well, but.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. One option would be to reduce the scale of the development on the site, to alleviate the need for additional parking that is not being provided. Certainly providing some accommodation on the roadway, which was already expressed by Councilor Van Passen. The question is where? Proximity certainly plays a significant factor into that. Most people, if they're going to park on the road, like to park in front of their home or within eye distance of where their vehicle is going to be parked. Beyond that, if there's other vacant land in the area that the applicant could purchase and create a parking lot is another option that could be out on the table, but it is certainly a challenge in providing off-site parking in this particular area. Those are kind of the options that come to top mind. Certainly, downscaling the development is probably something totally within the applicant's capability.
Thank you. And if I could just sort of maybe, Madam Mayor, pose a sort of similar question to the planning department. So in the technical comments, the last line of point five, related to the reduction in parking spaces, says engineering does not support the reduction of onsite parking, as this will likely result in significant increase in on-street parking demanded in the immediate area. So I guess my, my question to you then would be, what weight does that carry when this comes forward?
Well, through the, through Madam Mayor, sorry. Once we, what is decided with the zoning bylaw application, because the actual ins and outs of how many parking spaces, how many housing units, will get determined at site plan stage, not through this process. What this process is doing is looking at whether or not it's reasonable to have one parking space per one-bedroomed unit, and the other two, so for the two-bedroom and the visitors' parking are at the correct ratio, meeting the zoning bylaw provisions. So that's basically what one needs to look at. There should be adequate visitors' parking based on, on the zoning provision. The two unit, or the two-bedroom units will have, meet the provision. It's just the, I believe it's 29 one-bedroom units that would be single parking spaces. So I guess you, as, as members, you need to weigh up whether or not that has the potential to cause problems, because once we're, if we've approved that through this process, then once we're at site plan, then that's the ratio we're looking at, and that's what will determine ultimately the size of the building. So I hope that's sort of covered it. Thank you.
I've got Councilor Columbus and Brunton, but I'd just like to make a quick comment. So the suggestions are reduce the scale of the development, which we can't technically do, we cannot support the zoning of R5, or, you know, take county tax dollars to retrofit county-owned roads to create parking for, for-profit development, which doesn't add up to me. So unless I'm missing something, we're also being asked to consider the zoning without knowing the exact number of units and parking spaces that would follow much later anyways at site plan. So this for me is a no-brainer for not supporting, there's not enough information here to make a good plan, and I just wanted to comment that those options, although I appreciate them from engineering, they're not really viable options. So it's either black or white, yes or, yes or no. Councilor Columbus, go ahead.
Right, Councilor Van Passen mentioned the four-way stop, and Mr. Lambert indicated that there'd be increased activity in that area. What is the, when, when's the threshold reached to put a traffic signal light in that particular area to Mr. Lambert?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. There's been other studies in the area from, I'll say, some more significant developments, in particular, the one to the south of this area on Donley Drive, and given the pace of development activity at the moment, I'm going to suggest you're probably still 10 to 15 years out before you're close to even hitting a warrant for a traffic signal.
Okay, thank you for that. And what about Parkland? Is there cash in lieu of Parkland payment on this property?
Through Madam Mayor, yes, there should be. Yeah, it's a large enough development.
Sorry, I should also add, I agree with Councilor Duffy, it's a, it's a good spot for infill of some type, but you're not really giving council a lot of options here. Councilor Brunton?
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I'm a little bit confused here. I got a couple, first one to Darnell, has there ever been a signal warrant on that intersection, or is it?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Through this study, they examined what the impact would be with the additional traffic loading brought on by the site, and they did a traffic signal warrant, and it did not meet the warrant for that.
Okay, thank you. And looking at, I think it's B on the diagrams here, just going by, I'm a little bit confused, like, the actual road allowance isn't, like, this shows the property line right at the edge of the road, but that's not the complete road, you want the widening for the road allowance, am I correct? If, if, the way the diagram shows, I think it's an attachment B, if I'm correct? It shows, it shows the, the boundary of the property right next to the road, like, the actual road allowance was never adequately wide enough, am I correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor, you're correct, that's why a road widening is requested here.
Right, but no actual road pavement widening, it's just, you want the road allowance.
Correct.
Okay, well, if that's the case, that puts the building and everything right next to the, right, there's no side yard or nothing, correct? I guess call it side yard, front yard, I don't know, huh? Like, does that change, to me, like, the building, or, or the building is just right on the edge of the property.
Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps the applicant can speak to that. I'm assuming they took into account the road widening when they positioned their building, but I leave that to the applicant to respond to.
Let, let the planner chime in, and then we can ask that too.
Okay. Like, to me, like, it changes the daylighting on the corner, too.
Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Basically, in the R5, the side yard and exterior side are only three meters.
Sorry, your microphone's cutting out there. And Councilor Brunton, can you please turn yours off when he's drawing, and then we'll s-
Apologies, hopefully this is working. The interior side yard, rear, exterior side yard and front yard, under the zoning provisions for R5, are, are a minimum of three meters. So the building, yes, could be within three meters either side, to three meters, only three meters from, from Victoria. The only thing that pushes it back slightly more than the minimum three meters is the visibility display to the corner, so that they can actually see around the building when they're coming up to the stop. But otherwise, it, it's, it's actually further back than it would be required under the R5.
Okay, I'm still confused here. If you take Donley Drive, it shows the daylighting at 5.63 meters to the building, but on Victoria side, it shows, am I reading that right, 3.5 meters? But if you take in the road widening, there is no setback, period. They look at, at least that's what the drawing tells me.
What's the measurement on the setback, or on the, sorry, not the setback, the road allowance?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would have to check on the zoning part, but I'm assuming there's probably a three-meter setback from the widened right-of-way line is what would be required. I would agree with you, counselor, if I'm looking at map D that was presented, I think, on the PowerPoint slide, the, if the road widening was taken, then the building would need to be moved back.
That's, that's my point. So the building will have to be moved back if we take the road widening. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council before we invite the agent up? Councilor Van Passen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had that exact same question last week, and I asked the planner to send out the draft concept plan from the applicant, and it does show, the building shifted, and it does show everything differently than what was in the report, so.
Okay. We'll get to that then.
I had all the same questions, so.
Thanks. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands, so we do have one registered deputation today. We have-
We have Scott from Valley Consulting, and then I'll open it up to members in attendance. So welcome, join us. You have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And counsel, I think we have a presentation being brought up.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me today. My name is Scott Plandre, and I'm a planner with G Douglas Valley, the agent representing the applicant for this file. Next slide, please. Just the information there, G Douglas Valley, and the applicant is the numbered company there, looking to develop this property. Next slide, please. So I won't get too far into the site location. It's obviously been pretty well reviewed by county planning staff, but we're looking at that site at the corner of Donley Drive South in Victoria Ave. Next slide, please. So the report itself is the five-story, the mid-rise apartment building with 45 units. So a mix of 29 one-bedroom and 16 two-bedroom units. And considerations that I'll take a look at when, actual site plan itself, does have some at-grade parking. It's not underground, it's at-grade on some of the building envelope itself. That street-facing facade to break forward, so people aren't looking at the parking lot, they're able to see the front of the building at the street. Some of the perimeter landscaping that we talk about, that through the site plan, privacy fencing, landscaping to be added, to add to, obviously, the aesthetics, but also the privacy for surrounding landowners. And then those increased setbacks. And again, like I say, I'll get to that, those provisions, when we get to the site plan on the next slide that we have. We are proposing the access via Austin and Donley Drive. And what's key here is with that two-access, and some of the technical comments have been provided by development engineering, it's really about the functionality of the site for fire safety and garbage pickup. Without it, we'd have to have garbage trucks backing out. I understand from our architectural folks, is they'd be backing up around the site, backing out onto Donley. So really, that's what it's to provide that through traffic for, for fire and garbage pickup. No access has been provided off Victoria Street, as that's one of the arterial roads, so the higher classifications of roads by the county. Obviously, improves the diversity of ownership potential and even renting potential, because to that last point, the rental versus ownership hasn't been decided at this time. So they could be apartments for rental versus for buying. Next slide, please. So the existing zoning on the site, this is what would be permitted currently today as of use. So there are various commercial uses that are existed. There's low-density residential uses that are permitted and other uses. I think the problem with this is due to the size. Most of these uses are financially viable as a standalone use, and you normally see them in a multi-unit commercial, you know, strip mall or multi-unit commercial building. Makes it difficult to establish your own independent office, to have to go through the development process just for one single commercial use. Next slide, please. So the planning application itself, what we're seeking to do here, it's changing the neighborhood commercial to the urban residential five. There would be the special provision on it, an increased maximum floor area ratio. Obviously, the parking, which I'm hopeful Counselor Lassner can get into in detail at the end of the presentation. But it's important to note that the parking analysis was supported by a traffic impact study that looked at industry standards across.
One minute, Mary.
One minute. And then parking with the, between the street lines, obviously, that has to do with, there are three streets abutting this property. So that's just a technical sort of provision that we're looking at adding. And then the proximity of parking to proposed dwelling units, that's not exterior to the property, that's to the interior dwelling units of the building themselves. And obviously, we did talk about future site plan approval being required. So next slide, please. So the site plan itself, and again, I'm hopefully, Counselor Brunton will ask me the question about the road widening, and I can happily answer that, but we can go through that over in detail. Next slide, please. So just from the planning analysis, again, certainly, this is supported from provincial policy, looking to add that increase of density in housing units, and then just provide that greater availability. And with the official plan, looking to add to the, add the variety and range and mix of housing uses to, you know, help provide the much across the county.
You are out of time.
Out of time.
Okay, we will flip over to questions. Can you turn your microphone off when counselors are speaking and vice versa? We're getting some, we're losing some signal on your microphone there. And I will open it up to questions of the agent from council members. Counselor Duthy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I'll start. And thanks for, or Scott, sorry, thanks for being here. So I think obviously you heard my concern earlier related to parking and the reduction that you're looking for. You know, there's no available parking really on Austin. You spend any time over there any time of the day, it's generally full. For the on-street parking, the same over on Freeman. So I guess what would be your response? Because I can tell you that since this has become public, since the signs went up, I've had countless calls and emails related to this, about the density, about the size, and also very specifically about the parking. So how can you try and make that be somewhat at ease, or other options that you'll consider with your client?
So I certainly think in terms of the parking, sorry, through the chair to Counselor Duthy, certainly think in terms of the parking, I think what we're doing here is comparing sort of the apples to oranges. When we look at that sort of single-detached, semi-detached townhouse, those units are much larger in scale and can support larger family units. When you look at something like this, I know the Development Engineering Commons talked about not having any controls of how many vehicles each member will have within each dwelling unit. I think when you look at it, it's really the size of the unit itself that is going to really restrict how many people and cars and things they have, because when you're talking the one-bedroom apartments, they're 600 square feet. The two-bedroom apartments are under 1,000 square feet. And so to be able to achieve that restriction, it's really the units themselves that are going to be restricting that. And when we talk about providing these types of development, this land has obviously been vacant for a very long time. And I think it's one of those economies of scale thing that have to be achieved, particularly when you're looking at these smaller units. You have to be able to achieve a certain level, number of units, to be able to obviously go through the development process and actually construct the building itself.
So I guess that speaks to my question then about the density. How did you come up with 45 units in a five-story building?
So with it, again, obviously, that calculation for the applicant to be able to feel that viability and finding that balance between, you know, the site support versus what are the bylaw requirements, and that's where going back to the industry standard, looking in the traffic impact study. And I know it was brought up earlier about the development pressures south of the site, specifically within the traffic impact study that was done. It was requested by Norfolk County Engineering to increase the modeling, to take a look at sort of a higher threshold of how Donley Drive is going to sort of evolve over time. And I think that the standards were double what their traffic forecasts normally are done at, to accommodate for that increased growth that is, that is expected, at least in the southern part of that area.
If I may, a couple more. When was the traffic impact study done?
The date on it, it's in the package. I'd have to look on it, but it was, the counts specifically, the counts were done, the counts were done in October of 2024, and it was finalized, I believe, earlier this year.
And do we know, and my apologies, this is perhaps my own ignorance, but what times of day is it done?
So they do counts at sort of the peak hours. They do, I have it here. So they did sort of the peak demand hours. They did them from seven to nine, 11 to two, and three to six were their, were their counts. So they do them on those peak demand hours.
You're not helping me have a lot of faith in traffic impact studies these days, unfortunately. I can tell you, I mean, I drive that road every day, and right now, we have in-road signage right in front of a school where people park to drop off their car or their kids, and I see people driving the opposite lane into oncoming traffic in order to get around a in-road parking sign. So that's just one tiny example based on the traffic that's already there. So I'm really struggling to think that we would want to reduce parking in a development that has 45 units. And I take what you're saying about, you know, the size of the unit would dictate it, but honestly, that's just as much a hypothetical as having one car based on a single unit. So I'm, personally, I'm not interested in hypotheticals on that. I would rather plan for worst case as opposed to best case. And I think, you know, the planning comments and the technical comments in here say, you know, there's no way to know. Well, let's think on the worst-case scenario, just in case, because people are still heavily reliant on their vehicles here. I would love for Norfolk County to have a really robust transit system, and we could say that, no, you can just take the bus, but we're not there yet. So that's why I'm really struggling with this one.
I'll just maybe add further, members. I know parking is top priority, but also the other zoning that are already prohibited would have, could have high-traffic counts associated with them. Dry cleaning facilities, gas station, all of those things. So while we don't have those factors, maybe the best option would be to provide some direction on the special provision aspect of things, but we'll keep going through questions. But maybe let's kind of park the parking for a minute. And Counselor Brunton, you want to go to road allowance?
Well, I apologize. I'm going by my agenda that I had on the laptop here, but obviously, Counselor Van Passen pointed out there was another drawing provided, and I-
Madam Mayor, if I could just have to pull up that page of the presentation that has the different sketches?
I did see it now, when he presented it. But I guess my question, it'd be nice if some of these things were presented to us ahead of time. Like, all these papers we get about people objecting to it, we get them on our desk the minute we walk in here. How are we supposed to digest all that? I just find it very annoying. The other question I have, though, is Donley Drive and Victoria have restrictions on parking now? Can somebody answer that?
I'll pause right there. So let's stick with questions to the agent while Scott's up here. And as for paperwork on our desk, it's just the timing of the agenda publication. When the public finds out that there's something on, which is, comes out on Thursday or Friday, as per the same time we receive it, they're eligible to write in. So that's why it's an attachment to the agenda.
Well, it's, I find it annoying. But anyways, the other diagram that Counselor Van Passen refers to, why wasn't that presented in the, on the computer or on our laptops? Anyways.
Do you have a question for Scott?
Yeah, you don't, obviously, don't know about the parking restrictions on Donley or Victoria right now. Do you know, are you aware of that, or?
I believe in the, so through the chair to Counselor Brunton, I do believe there is parking, some parking, limited parking allowed on Donley north of the site. However, on Victoria, as an arterial road, I believe what the TIS said is there's no signs, but it's assumed there's no parking, given the classification of the road.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess just to road widening, to put it at ease, yes, the site has been designed, taken into account the road widening. And if you look at the site plan that we provided as part of our presentation, there's a three-meter-wide road widening, then the three-meter-wide setback, understanding that road widening will be taken.
I did see that, but again, it was not in the original package. Thank you.
Counselor Van Passen, is your, do you have a question for Scott, or was it the map? Okay, go ahead, and then Counselor Columbus.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. In our technical comments from engineering, they are recommending no access to Donley and Taylor Street now, whatever they want. The only access will be off Victoria. Would that change the way that the traffic study would be conducted and get a better idea of what that might cause?
Through the chair, I can't specifically speak to whether it'd be, need to be remodeled. I know the development engineering did speak to the two-site accesses, in particular, having an issue with Austin Court. I think when you look at the site laydown itself, there's very limited reasons of why anyone would cut through the site, given that anyone who wants to get into the subdivision, maybe if they live on the south end along Austin Court there, they might use it as a throughway. But for transient traffic, seems to be limited rationale why anyone would cut through local roads to try to get up to Highway 3 or out to Ireland, when they could just use Victoria or Lyndale. Specifically for the question about looking at the site here, if it came off Victoria, I believe there's restrictions in the county's design guidelines about connections to arterial roads, which I believe Victoria is classified as. So a little bit, I guess, unsure where that comment came from, or how it came to fruition, because I believe there are restrictions on arterial road connections, so.
If I could follow up, Madam Mayor, that would be exactly my question. If Victoria is the arterial road, and people egress from this development directly onto an arterial road, to me, is different than the egress being onto Donley, and then they go 100 yards and they're at a four-way stop, and then they have to turn one way or the other onto the arterial road. So that should make some difference on the merits of the traffic study, depending on what your starting point is. I'm just a simpleton, but that's my logic in my weird head, so.
Counselor Columbus, do you have a question for Scott?
Reducing the density of this development could eliminate a lot of issues like the parking accessibility, ingress egress, and be more compatible with the neighborhood. Any thoughts about eliminating one floor and just going to four floors instead of five?
Through the chair, so obviously, you know, in discussions with the applicant, these are the type of things of where it becomes financially unviable for, it can become financially unviable to build these types of developments when you start getting below a certain unit count, particularly when they are such small units and the price point of them is at a certain level. Obviously, that needs to be taken into consideration. I think the concept of the scale and the size, Simco does have a number of three, four, five-story, similar-sized residential apartment buildings that do have less, sort of the, a lesser parking ratio, and they function quite well. And again, that, because I'll go back to that, the actual size of the unit is going to limit, you know, how many cars people are having within this development. And we do have other, represent other clients that, at these similar-sized apartment buildings that do have a smaller parking ratio. So again, to answer your question, obviously, that's not for me to decide as the agent, but the risk there, obviously, is that where, you know, you get to a certain price point where it becomes unviable. And as was mentioned earlier, the as-of-right zoning permits sort of higher traffic uses on it currently, that, you know, this wouldn't have to come to a public meeting, and you can have specific commercial uses on there that would have much more traffic volume on a day, sort of hourly basis, coming in and out of there. So that's where that balance needs to be found with kind of going forward on this project.
So Duthy, what's your comment? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I forgot to ask this earlier, my apologies. Scott, I didn't see this in the concept plan. Is there landscape buffer around this at all?
Through the chair to Counselor Duffy, so there's the three-meter setback, which in that setback, there would be landscaping required. There would also generally, we assume, a privacy fence, what privacy fence is required. Again, through site plan, it's required as part of the agreement. Securities are posted to ensure it gets built through that site plan agreement process.
I would just note that there's a comment that we received, I think it's in our package that was on our desk, that Counselor Brunton was referring to earlier, that the neighbor to the north had just done a lot of landscaping and doesn't want it affected or touched. So hence the reason for asking the question. Thank you.
Any other questions for the agent, Counselor Van Passen?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And again, I need to understand that I understand what the request is here, but I think our staff touched on it, that they're looking for some sort of signal from council that we would be content with those ratios you provided for the parking of one spot for a single and one and a half spots for a double, and one visitor for every three units, and the floor area ratios. And then if you get that signal from council that they'd be happy with that, do you go back and redesign it to make it work, or we still have to give you relief for parking beyond that?
So through the chair, yes, the bylaw provision of the ratio is what the development would have to stick within. It doesn't have to come back in this exact building form, building location, you know, it can be jigged around, as long as it meets the provisions of the parent bylaw and what was approved as part of the special provision. So we'd have to operate, the applicant would have to stay within those ratios, and those floor, the approved maximum floor area ratios that if they were approved, they'd have to stick with those, the actual detailed design. Because again, this is still fairly high-level schematic design of the site. The detailed design, assuming the signals from council were supportive of the request and the provision, the detailed design would then take place through the, through the site plan process, which the detailed zoning review would made sure we're meeting the parent zone and any of the special provisions that were approved as part of the application.
Well, I think there's at least one councillor who's been winking and nodding that he's not content with that ratio. So, you know, this is just an information meeting, and you're looking for some sort of direction. I could probably do the same and nod my head and wink, and say, I'm not happy quite with it, so let's find a solution to that. So.
Any final questions for the agent? Okay, thanks for joining us. Second, we received the reputation from Councillor Duffey, all in favor. The secondary information the council didn't have, was there a timing lapse on that? Was there a change in the presentation?
Through the mayor, pardon me, you mean in terms of this, this concept drawing? The concept drawings don't end up in the presentation package. It's the ones that have been drawn by GIS that end up in the presentation package. So this was one that we had, but because right now, the development is only indicative of what could be there, there's only so much weight that can actually be given to this drawing, this concept drawing at this stage.
Okay, we also received a staff report that said 29 one-bedroom and 24 two-bedroom, and the agent was just before us with 29 one-bedroom and 16 two-bedroom. So is that changes to the?
I went by what was in the information that I had from the original submission. Things may have changed, you know, outside of.
Change from the applicant in between?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Broughton?
I guess my question is, how long ago would, did you see this drawing, the one that's in front of us here on the screen up there? How long ago did you see that?
Through the mayor, this came with the original application.
How long ago? Couple of weeks?
Probably about a month and a half ago now.
Well, why, why wouldn't it be included in the, in our package that we got on East Drive? Why wouldn't it, why couldn't you just put that in there? It would have simplified things, I guess. That's all I'm saying.
Through the mayor, we certainly can do that for these larger projects in the future. It's just not been standard practice to add mapping or drawings beyond.
Well, no, I'm just saying it would have simplified a lot of questions. I, for myself, anyway, I don't know, we'll address the council. But anyways, thank you.
I think it speaks to the road allowance, but yeah, okay, Councillor Van Passen, and then we're moving on.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Staff have been trying to get this process as simple and as easy and provide us with necessary information, but I think our planner had a point there. The, on these more major projects, if they can include the, the planning justification report, which is the one that had that different sketch, as part of the package, because not only does it, it provides the details from the perspective of the applicant, as opposed to solely from the perspective of our planners. And believe it or not, there's a lot of times that those two opinions are different. So, and it's nice to hear both sides of the story. And it's just a matter of electronically attaching a few more pages, probably about 50. But again, maybe on these larger-scale projects, it just becomes standard practice to include them for council's perusal.
Okay, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak to this file? If so, I'd ask you to come up on deck here with the next person ready and waiting in the wings. If I can let you know when you have one minute remaining. There's a little button on that microphone to the right-hand side that you're going to push. And if you could state your name and your address for the public record before you begin, that would be great.
My name is Margaret Tucker, 73 Freeman Crescent, Simcoe. I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I know there are other neighbors here who feel the same way I do. My concern is that this is supposed to be a meeting regarding changing zoning bylaw, am I correct? And yet, the builder or the representative seems to assume that they've, the decision has been made and they're going to forge ahead. That's the opinion I have. It may not be everybody's opinion. But as far as developing that piece of property, it's a wonderful idea, but I could not agree with changing the zoning if a five-story apartment building's going to go there. The area is basically townhomes and semis. If that was built on that property, there wouldn't be this mess with the roads having to expand, because how many units could you build there? You know, there, there probably wouldn't be the need for the county to do anything with the, with the roads. And the map that we got in our information letters from the county showed one entrance and exit from that development, and it was on Austin Crescent. And that street runs into a street that holds a school. The, you know, either direction, you go to the east, it's a little farther away from the school, but right on the west side, it's right there at the school. So that's a problem. And I know the traffic concerns, because I lived there. My street is plugged all the time. And to turn left off Freeman Crescent onto Donley, you're taking your life in your hands 90% of the time because of the traffic parked. You cannot see oncoming traffic from the left. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of concern there. And another concern is the water and sewer supply. We already have three enormous buildings going up by the real Canadian superstore. We have two or three more that are on the books that have been approved. So where does all this water come from? How does our sewer system handle all of that extra? They're not online yet. They're not using the water yet. They're not using the sewer yet. So what's going to happen? Can they handle that load and not affect the people that are already using those things? Let's see. Considering the time it has taken to build the apartment building over by the superstore, what would be the timeframe to build something like that? Because it's a total mess. They're way back out of, out of the way. But if it's done on a public corner like that, we would be dealing with a mess for two or three years, probably. You know, and as, you know, that's not acceptable. The people that live in the area, we have a peaceful, quiet community, and people want to come in and change it. And why are all of these people coming to Simcoe? They're, you know, they say rent or own, that's fine, but what is there here for them? Are they just, we're going to be a bedroom community, and they're going to commute on our already overloaded highways and public roads, you know? It's not, it's not something that we should accept. And it's not our responsibility to accommodate the builder, so that, that his plans are viable. You know, there are other builders who could come and build something that we could accept and appreciate. So I would not, I would not approve of changing the zoning for that particular building. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Just a hang time for a moment. You might have questions from council, I'm not sure, but, okay, seeing none. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? If there is, hopefully we can get you right on deck waiting, so that we can keep seamlessly moving through. The next person could come and wait in behind. And then just a reminder, five minutes, please state your name and address.
Laura Swire, 334 Donley Drive South. I don't live right by the corner here, but I do live down where the new development is going to be. And we, we were all here in this room talking about the traffic that is there now and are concerned for that. And Councillor Duffy, you are completely correct that there's a lot of traffic there. And when you say that, the lights are not anticipated for 10 or 15 years? Seriously? And you're going to put this building right on that corner where the four-way stop is, you're going to have cars coming out from there? That's going to bog things up even more than it already is. And you talked about a traffic study that was done in October 2024. And then there was also the traffic study that was done for the development of the Woodway Trails expansion. Are those different traffic studies? That's what I'm wondering, because like the one that was done in October 2024, are you talking about just that area of Donley and Victoria? Does that account for all the traffic that's coming up from the Don, from Woodway Trails? I don't know. I just don't understand how you can put 45 units in there, and same, the number, the vehicle loading is going to be far greater than what is proposed, in my amateur opinion. I think that that's wishful thinking, that because the unit's only 800 square feet, you're only going to have one car. If it's a young couple that are buying their first property, they're going to have two cars, because they're working somewhere else. They're not working right there. Is there anything else? Okay. It's the, the traffic, and we need traffic lights at that corner. If this is going to go ahead, we need lights at that intersection.
Thank you for joining. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Stephen. I live on Austin Crescent, Stephen Payne. Sorry. I live on Austin Crescent. My name is Stephen Payne, 64 Austin Crescent. And I just don't think a five-story building next to these small houses is, is just too tall. There's not, there's got to be privacy concerns. There's a lot of young kids that live on Austin Crescent that cannot have a parking access off Austin Crescent. That's just not acceptable. So I think there's, there's other uses for that parcel of land, a splash pad, a park, maybe a pizza place or something in that neighborhood. Would that be better? I don't know.
Thanks for joining. Hold on just one sec. Any questions? Councillor Duffy, come on back up, Stephen.
Sorry, Stephen, I realize I'm maybe putting you on the spot just a little bit. But can you just speak to, because I know some people that also live on Austin who have, have made this remark as well, what the parking situation is like there most of the time for on, okay, so specifically for on-street parking?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's bad now, so.
So, so the way it was put to me recently, and including like this week, was, you know, you might be able to find a space or two on the street between nine and five, but outside of that, good luck. Does that seem accurate?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty bad, like, all the time now. So, yeah.
Okay. And that section, like Austin Crescent, lots of families, lots of young children that live over there?
There is a lot of young children, and I know my son, and there's a young boy that lives actually right across the street on that corner, who has special needs as well. I don't know if that matters, but there is a lot of young kids, and they walk to school right along there, too. So.
So, so that was what I was hoping that you could maybe touch on, is the amount of pedestrian traffic, specifically of children?
Yeah, I walk my son to school every day right past there. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm assuming no one else wants to speak, because no one's lined up. Please come on up, and if we could have the next person waiting on deck. Thank you. Just one sec, we got to get you in front of that microphone. Hit the button on the right-hand side to make sure it turns red. And just a reminder to state your name and address for the public record. Name and address, please.
My name is Maria Hare, and I'm at 84 Freeman Crescent. And I can tell you, there's going to be no parking. And if someone puts a light, even in 15 years, that now trying to get out of Freeman Crescent, the wait is, there's cars all the way down from Victoria Road to my Crescent, because I'm right in the corner. And another thing is our garbage truck that comes around, who backs out on Donley, because something was said about, well, they back out of that apartment that they want to build, on Donley, on the east side. That is going to raise havoc, I'll tell you. And another thing is, have sort of surmised, because I saw it on Google about how many apartments, one bedroom and then two bedrooms. And most people that have a two-bedroom, they usually have two cars. Many people on my street have two cars, three cars type of thing. So where is all the parking going to be? Like, I'm really gobsmacked that this may go through. So I just am qualifying things that I have seen. And for fire trucks and police cars, and even other vehicles, they talked about at the school, and when it's time for the parents to pick up their children, you do have to go out into the other lane to be safe about it. And we have parking on the west side of Donley, near the Crescent. And that even causes problems for people, especially, there's always cars going back and forth. It's really, really busy. So I'm hoping that people do take this under consideration for the residents and people that have to get out on the mainframe like Donley to get, to go somewhere. And someone made a very good point. If it was an apartment building where people didn't have all those cars, but we don't, we don't have really buses here. We don't have trolleys here. We do, can get a cab, that's about it, or social senior services. So I would just like everybody to really take it under consideration, because everybody that's spoken has made very valid points. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Are there any questions for Maria? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks like the microphone's ready for you, so just your name and address for the public record, please.
Okay, I'm Cheryl Gaylor, and I live at 83 Donley Drive South, which is in the second home from the vacant lot. And speaking about traffic, our section between Victoria and Anderson Ave is, there's times of the day now, without anything built there, where we can't get, we can't back out of our driveway, because it's just too busy. It's not just local traffic. Like, in our residential area between Freeman and Donley, we have 80 homes. And even if you say 60% of the 80 have two cars, and 40% of the 80 homes have one car, which is probably low, that's 130 residential vehicles that all have to get onto Donley Drive. And they, we have no other way of getting anywhere else in Simcoe, other than through getting onto Donley Drive. And, and then we also have the hydro truck traffic, because Ontario Hydro has a truck yard just across Victoria Street, just down on Donley there. Plus, we have all the school bus traffic. Plus, like other people were saying, we have all the traffic. Plus, like other people were saying, we have all the traffic from parents taking their kids to school and picking them up from school. So having an access from that apartment building onto Donley Drive for them to get out is not, not viable, or we would never be able to get out of our driveways, which isn't there. So, so that was my main point. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming. Any questions for Cheryl? Seeing none. Thank you, Cheryl. Microphone is on for you, sir. Just your name and address before you get started.
85 Donley South, line house that's right adjacent to-
Sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Paul and Ramsey, 85 Donley South. Pretty much everybody's already said everything I was thinking, just want to throw a couple things in there, my input, because I live right at that area. Not needing a stoplight there, just kind of wondering why OPP sit on that corner at least once a week. The other thing is, if you exit out of Donley Street, then you're going to have to get more crossing guards. And the other thing is on Austin Crescent, that this gentleman here was just talking about children walking to school. There's no sidewalks. You want to put all that traffic on there, you got to build some sidewalks. That's just all I wanted to say. Everything else is being said. We don't want the building there, that's obvious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Questions? Seeing none. Come on up.
Brittany Merrick, I live on Austin Crescent. I have a daughter that goes to school at Lyndale. Again, I just want to touch on the fact that there's no sidewalks. I don't really mind that there isn't, but adding that amount of vehicles coming in and out when there's already, like, our street is full. It just, it's not safe for our kids. School's already packed, there's already portables, there's no more space. Oh, there was one more point, and I lost it. It's mostly the parking. Like, our street is full. Oh, the corner, Donley and Anderson, it's already really bad. Nobody stops at the stop sign. Everybody's just cutting right through. And it's just not safe for the kids. There's not enough space for this type of dwelling, I guess. I'm not sure what to call it, but, and that's all, really.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Anyone else? Final call for any folks in the room. Okay, is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak? Was that an "oh," as in someone thought of something else? They want to speak? Okay. All right. I'll look for a mover and a secondary. Please go ahead, Counselor Columbus.
Madam Mayor, we heard the last speaker mention about the school capacity and the fact that it's packed and there's portables there already. To the, to the planner, is, is he going to be communicating with the school board to see what impact this development would have on their capacity?
Through the mayor to Counselor Columbus, we certainly can. It's, I'm trying to think whether or not it was done. I'll have to have a look back and see who we circulated to. I usually would do it for something this size, though, and with the school so close, but I will verify, and if they haven't been, we'll certainly do that before a recommendation report.
Okay, mover and a secondary, please. Forgive the informality, but deputations, Colin, Cheryl, Maria, Steve, Laura, Barb, and Brittany. Did I miss anyone? You've got last names there, Mr. Clerk. So mover and a secondary to receive all of those deputations as information on the record. Counselor Huffman moves. Counselor Duthy seconds. All in favor? That is carried. I do have a couple comments that I can share today, and maybe one question we can put to staff to help you, but the remainder of the commentary that you shared with us today, staff have heard, they've recorded. They will compile as many answers as they can, work with the applicant and the agent, and put that into a staff report that will come back to council for decision at a later date. So no decision will be made today, and although we won't have all the answers, we will get them in writing for you in a staff report. Just a couple quick corrections. I heard about the garbage and the backup, I believe. The agent spoke about that, a change being made so that that was a safer process and not needing to occur. So as it stands right now in the proposal, the garbage truck does not have to back out. School space, usually these applications are circulated to the school boards at large for comment, and 9.75 times out of 10, the school board does not provide a response to Norfolk County. Very, very rarely do they engage in the process. Typically, that would be very helpful to hear back from the school boards, but it would help with long-term planning, you know, not that short, short term. So it's a, it's a good point, and I understand the, the capacity concerns, but not something that we typically ever get information back from them on. Sidewalks, however, usually that is something that we at council like to make the developers put in for our community members, so that's something that could be addressed later on down the road. I heard a lot of talk about safety on Austin specifically with the, with the kids, so that's something that could be looked at and could be of benefit to the community in the long run. And then lastly, water and wastewater infrastructure. Staff are always working, those, those treatment facilities, the capacity of them, they're monitored daily, hourly. That is something that we will always continuously work on, addressing capacity and flow concerns. However, it is not a reason for Norfolk County to decline development. If we were to say that we don't have water, we are still required to pass or decline a planning file and specify why, and typically what happens is you would pass the development file and give it a holding provision, and it would wait until we had water or wastewater. So those couple questions I could answer for you right off the hop. I thought I'd share a bit of that information. The rest will come back in a staff report. There is a staff recommendation before us, but I think there might be some creative workarounds that we could send staff back to their offices with today. Counselor Duthy, did you have a suggestion?
I'm sure we can probably come up with something. Counselor Van Passen is usually great at that, though, and he seems to be reading my mind. My question, I did have one for staff, though, is just when we anticipate this coming back? If I could pose that, I think maybe that's where you were going, but.
Through the mayor to Counselor Duthy, we were aiming for the November council meeting, because you want to give the public enough time after this meeting to also contact us and to look at whether or not any rethinking needs to be done.
Okay. So Madam Mayor, I'm certainly happy to move the staff recommendation, but with some caveats that they work with the applicant or the agent to perhaps modify the development to allow for appropriate level of parking. Sidewalks should be included, or consideration of sidewalks should be included, landscape buffers. What are the other things that we talk about? Road widening was in there.
I think that's it, outside of what was covered in the report, yeah.
Yeah. So providing some direction to staff to, to have those conversations with the applicant and the agent prior to the report coming forward.
Understood, staff. Directions, okay. Is there a secondary for that? Counselor Brunton, is there any discussion or debate on that, fairly high level? If not, I will call the question. All in favor? That is carried. So for members of the public in attendance today, we will have another staff report. It sounds like November, don't hold us to it. But if that is the case, it would be the fourth Tuesday in November, and planning staff can work with members of the public, especially the ones who spoke today, we'll have their information to notify them that it's coming back up, and that's when we'll make a final decision. But we'll have a staff report with some of the answers to some of your questions. Thank you very much for coming today. We have no other items on our agenda, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn for 19:00 PM. Counselor Huffman, Counselor Columbus, all in favor? Carried. Thanks very much, everyone. Have a great afternoon.